Are we ready? Okay. Good afternoon. Welcome to, uh...
Whatever we are.
Welcome to the review session for City Planning Commission November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, today's agenda will begin with a proposed mixed-use building at one sixty-six Kings Highway in Brooklyn, Bensonhurst, Brooklyn. Project will... would include one hundred new homes, of which thirty would be income-restricted, affordable, on top of ground-floor commercial space. The site sits only a few blocks from the Seth Lowe Playground, the Hy-Lawn Branch of the Brooklyn Public Library, and the Kings Highway and subway station. Moving to East Williamsburg, uh, we'll consider a mixed-use building with fifteen homes above ground-floor retail, around a third of which would be income-restricted, affordable. The project is located at nineteen Masbeth Avenue, near the Graham Avenue L train, the B twenty-four and B thirty-four bus lines, and the six-point-four-acre Cooper Park. Back before us as well is nine seventy-five Nostran Avenue in Crown Heights South. This is a mixed-use development with over three-hundred-twenty homes and a fresh supermarket, which is requesting a curb-cut extension for deliveries for ease of access to the residential and commercial parking garage. The commission will also hear details on a special permit renewal for thirty-two-oh-one Vernon Boulevard in Ravenswood, Queens. This was initially approved in twenty nineteen. This development would include over three-hundred-fifty homes, of which roughly one-hundred-ten would be permanently income-restricted, affordable. Located close to Socrates Sculpture Park, Rainey Park, and Noguchi Museum, the project also features public open space and community facility. Finally, we will look at city council modifications for two significant Brooklyn projects: Brooklyn Yards and Borough Park and nine sixty-two-dash-nine-seven-two Franklin Avenue in Crown Heights. You'll recall that Brooklyn Yards would include fourteen buildings with a total of two-hundred-seventy homes, around eighty of which would be income-restricted, affordable. Project would platform over an active train line and would also feature office and retail space and three publicly accessible open space areas. Lastly, we will review the council's modifications to nine sixty-two-nine-seventy-two Franklin Avenue. This development will create three-hundred-fifty-five new homes, over one-hundred of which are permanently income-affordable near the Brooklyn Botanical Gardens, the Jackie Robinson Playground, and trains at Franklin Avenue, Medgravis College, and Prospect Park. The recent city council committee votes on this project have been a long time coming, and we applaud the city council, especially council member Hudson, the commission staff, the Brooklyn Botanical Garden team, and the applicant team on their collaboration to find a win-win solution on this site. Uh, the chair would say, were he here, is that when the commission voted to modify this rezoning, he believes that we had a collectively charted path forward that balances the need for new housing with critical protections for a treasured community space. With that, Sarah, let us proceed. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and welcome to City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. The time is one seventeen PM, and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning tax amendments in Brooklyn Community District eleven. Our presenter is Amelia Clark.
Hi.
Now, can you hear me? Okay, fantastic. Good afternoon, commissioners and Vice Chairman. Should I be... There we go. Awesome. Great, okay. This is a private application from one sixty-six Plaza LLC for a zoning map amendment from an R-six-B C-two-three district to an R-seven-X C-two-four district and a zoning text amendment to Appendix F. These actions would facilitate the development of a new mixed-use building, including over eighty-nine-thousand square feet of residential space, excuse me, and ninety-seven dwelling units, and fourteen-thousand-six-hundred square feet of ground-floor commercial space. The project is located at one sixty-six Kings Highway between West Eleventh and West Thirteenth Streets in Bensonhurst, CD eleven, Brooklyn. This is an aerial view looking north towards downtown Brooklyn and Manhattan. The project area sits in central Bensonhurst in southwest Brooklyn. It is located about a mile north of the Belt Parkway and approximately four blocks east of the Kings Highway and Train subway stop. The project area is also served by several bus lines, including the B-eight-two and the B-four, which connects Bensonhurst to eastern Brooklyn. The project area consists of two full blocks and is bound by Kings Highway and Quentin Road to the north and south, and West Eleventh and West Thirteenth Streets to the east and west. Kings Highway and Quentin Road are east-west corridors, both eighty feet wide. The wider corridors surrounding the project area, specifically Kings Highway and Avenue P just to the north, are characterized by larger mixed-use and residential apartment buildings. The mid-block areas between Avenue P and Kings Highway, as well as the blocks south of the project area, are predominantly lower-density residential, um, with semi-detached and attached residential buildings between two and three stories. Stillwell Avenue, which is a block west from the project area, is a major north-south corridor connecting southbound to Coney Island. The Highland Branch of the Brooklyn Public Library sits directly across West Thirteenth Street from the project area. Sethlow Playground, bound by Avenue P to the south, sits a block north of the project On this land use map, the project area is outlined in green with the development site outlined in pink. The development site, which is block six-six-one-nine lot forty-two, is one of the five lots that comprise the rezoning area. As illustrated here, the land uses in the surrounding area... I'm sorry, in the area surrounding the project consist of low and mid-density residential, commercial, mixed-use, office, community facilities, and transportation uses. Um, in addition to the aforementioned public library, there are a few community facility uses in the vicinity on this map in blue. Those include an adult daycare center fronting West Tenth Street, public school six-eight-six on Avenue P and Stillwell, and an assisting living facility also on Avenue P and Stillwell. There are a few transportation utility uses along Kings Highway, including a gas station on the northeast corner of Kings Highway and Stillwell, and two former auto-related businesses diagonally across the street fronting Kings Highway. The rezoning area is mapped R-six-B with a C-two-three commercial overlay. R-six-B is a low-to-medium-density contextual residential district with an FAR of two. C-two-three is a commercial overlay that supports a wider range of local retail uses. The rezoning area was originally zoned C-eight-two at the adoption of the zoning resolution in nineteen sixty-one, but was rezoned to R-five C-two-four in nineteen sixty-five, and then to R-six-B C-two-three in two thousand and five as part of the Bensonhurst rezoning. The Bensonhurst rezoning was a contextual rezoning which aimed to balance housing development and pushed development toward key corridors. Currently, the blocks surrounding the project area are zoned R-four-one, R-five-B, R-six-B, and R-seven-A, with C-two-three overlays along the Kings Highway frontages. This is a northern aerial view that shows a complete picture of the rezoning area and development site. The rezoning area includes five lots with a combined twenty-eight-thousand square feet. The development site is a single, approximately seventeen-thousand-square-foot corner lot. The three adjacent lots to the development site front Quentin Road and are improved with a two-story, two-family residential building... I'm sorry, each improved with a two-story, two-family residential building, two of which have detached garages. Across West Twelfth Street, block six-six-two-oh, is a single lot that is currently improved with a single-story commercial use. This is a view of the development site facing southeast on Kings Highway. The development site is currently bound by a construction fence. This view looks northeast from Quentin Road and West Thirteenth Street. You can see the three existing townhomes in the center of the image on the left, and the development site on the left side of the image on the right. This view looks north and northeast up West Twelfth Street from Quentin Road with the development site on the left side of each image. This view looks west from West Eleventh Street, which is the eastern boundary of the development site. The image on the left shows Quentin Road, and the image on the right shows Kings Highway. Lastly, this view looks south and southwest from Kings Highway toward the development So the applicant is proposing a ten-story-plus-cellar mixed-use building. Of the building's almost one-hundred-and-four-thousand square feet, about fourteen-thousand-six-hundred would be ground-floor commercial, and over eighty-nine-thousand would be residential-floor area. The single ground-floor commercial space will have entrances on Kings Highway, West Twelfth Street, and Quentin Road. The proposed building will rise to a total height of a hundred-and-three feet and ten inches with setbacks along Kings Highway. There will be forty-eight attended parking spaces in the cellar level, accessible via a twelve-foot-long curb cut on Quentin Road. Floors two through ten will include ninety-seven residential units, including thirty of which would be restricted to incomes averaging eighty percent AMI pursuant to MAH option two. The residential lobby will front Quentin Road with a second entrance on West Twelfth Street, and the development site will include a common recreation room, gym, and shared outdoor terrace for tenants. The overall building will have an FAR of five-point-nine-five. So to facilitate this development, the applicant seeks two proposed actions: a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to Appendix F. The zoning map amendment seeks to change the existing R-six-B and C-two-three districts to an R-seven-X district with a C-two-four overlay across the entirety of the project R-seven-X is a contextual zoning district with a maximum residential FAR of six with MIH, an FAR of five for community facility uses, and an FAR of two for commercial uses with the commercial overlay. Parking must be provided for fifty percent of market-rate residential units and for fifteen percent of income-restricted units. Within MIH-designated areas, the minimum base height can rise to between six feet and a hundred-and-five feet, with a maximum building height of a hundred-and-forty-five feet when providing a qualifying ground floor. This would not change under City of Yes for housing opportunity. The applicant also proposes a zoning text amendment to Appendix S to map MIH, coterminous with the rezoning area, creating permanently income-restricted housing via MIH options one and two. This application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity. The proposed development would provide new housing units in a neighborhood that has experienced little recent housing production. The area median household income for the project area is sixty-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, which is around ten-thousand dollars lower than the median income for Brooklyn and New York City. The applicant intends to provide MIH units that meet eighty percent AMI income band limits. As per the report, the racial makeup of the Bensonhurst and Bass Beach NTA is predominantly Asian and white. Asian residents are forty percent of the total population, which greatly exceeds both the borough and citywide percentages. Hispanic-Latino residents comprise sixteen percent of the NTA, and only one percent of the population are Black, non-Hispanic. From twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, the area saw a modest nine percent increase in population, with increases in the Asian population commensurate to borough and citywide trends. The Hispanic population and Black population also grew, while the white population decreased by thirty percent. Between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, Bensonhurst and Bass Beach experienced a two percent increase in housing units, while the overall population grew by nine percent, illustrating that the housing unit production has not kept pace with population growth. To conclude, this is a private application for a zoning map amendment from an R-six-B C-two-three district to an R-seven-X C-two-four district and a zoning text amendment to Appendix S to facilitate the development of a new ten-story mixed-use building, including ninety-seven dwelling units and over fourteen-thousand square feet of ground-floor commercial space at one sixty-six Kings Highway in CD eleven, Brooklyn. Thank you, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Benjamin.
Hi. Thank you for the presentation. I have two questions. The first one is, I'm interested in your thinking about including the block sixty-six-twenty in the rezoning. It's not clear to me... You took out the part of the block that had existing homes on it, those three homes. So why include block sixty-six-twenty?
Uh, just to clarify, the three townhomes are also included in the rezoning area. They're just external to the development.
Okay. But why include block sixty-six-twenty? It seems like you're making it a development site.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I think certainly part of the rationale for this rezoning is to align with the sort of pushing denser development to wider corridors, and this is certainly an underutilized site, only a single-story building there. That said, there's not projections for development on this site in the with-action scenario. I'm sorry, there are projections in the with-action scenario, but the current owner of this building does not intend to redevelop. It's currently like a fruit-and-vegetable vendor. Maybe if there's anything else that I...
Well, it's just that when this was last rezoned in, what, two thousand and five, the idea of density along Kings Highway was part of the rezoning, and at that time it was thought that you would get development with the R-six-B, and the community overall was pleased with the housing that would result from that. Obviously, this site did not develop. I don't know how long it's been vacant, um, but there's a big difference between R-six-B and R-seven-X. And I'm wondering, while you're right, to the north, on the... Two blocks away, there are higher rises, but most of the intervening sites are low-rise R-fours. So what can you tell us about why the R-seven-X is appropriate?
Certainly. Yeah, well, I think in general, the R-seven-X kind of meets our standard, you know, checkbox criteria, like the site is close to transit, it's close to open space, and like I mentioned, it's, you know, flanked by two wide streets, and there's sort of a existing land use pattern to have larger-scale buildings, like I said, pushed to kind of wider corridors in the area. Oops, this way, sorry. Maybe this is a better view. You can kind of see along Avenue P here, there's a string of, you know, maybe six-story pre-war buildings that are existing, so for those reasons. Sure. And maybe David will step in.
Hi. Also, one of the biggest differences between an R-seven-B and an R-seven-X is that R-seven-B doesn't necessarily include MIH units, right? And so that's a very important policy of us, right?
Right, but that brings up my second point, which is that the rents under the MIH are greater than the market rate. So why are we doing it? Why do we think that MIH is appropriate here when it leads to higher rents?
Um, yes, this is a good flag. This is unusual, but not completely unprecedented.
But I did vote no against the others.
Fair point. I guess I can just give a little context to the methodology used in the RER. DCP recommends that our applicants use the third quartile of rents in the area, usually data pulled from StreetEasy, and this particular applicant team has conveyed that they believe they'll be able to get top rents for their market units, market-rate units for this development. They note that there has been quite limited housing production in this area. A lot of the existing housing stock is rather old and doesn't have the kind of amenities that they're proposing here. I guess anecdotally, the applicant has a new development about half a mile to the east from this site, and their studios are renting for twenty-five-hundred dollars a month, and their three-bedroom units are renting for five-thousand dollars a month. So they expect to command top rents for these market-rate units, which is not reflected in the methodology used for the RER.
But then it's also not reflected in the income. If they're expecting five-thousand dollars instead of three-thousand dollars for the three bedrooms, then they're not expecting people who live there and have the median income to move into market rate. They're expecting people to come from somewhere else.
I think we can certainly have them speak to these choices at the public hearing.
Okay, I mean, I know that the policy is that when there's a zoning, a rezoning that increases FAR, we attach MIH to it, but my question is always, does it make sense in many instances if what it does is serve to drive up the rents in the area, does it make sense to do this?
Thank you for that comment.
No, that's fair, and the applicant can speak to a little bit more of this on Wednesday, but I think an important part of this is, of course, that MIH is in perpetuity, right?
This is for certification.
Yeah, when it comes back for hearings.
Yeah, right, so it'll be in a bit... Yeah, I apologize.
You can let them know that that's the question, but it really is a question also for you as the... For the department as to whether we want to start to look at where and how MIH makes sense in areas that have, one, a high percentage of already rent-burdened people, so those people are not going to be moving in here unless they're moving into the affordable, and then they're still paying more than they were paying previously. And this is an area that has experienced displacement. So with those two combined, I would say, take a look at whether you really think MIH is doing something that will benefit this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to underscore, because my question would have been around that dynamic as well, you know, and why the so-called low-income projected rent is higher than the income-restricted. I still don't know. I listened to what you say, but I still don't under... I don't think I have a total grasp of the rationale for that, so that will certainly be a question for the applicants to anticipate. Other questions? Commissioner Gold.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Benjamin's question about the rezoning area. Just as we think about that, if the other... I understand where the applicant comes from, but if the other owner who's next door has no plans, does it make sense to keep that in there, or is there some reason that we need to keep that site in there as well?
Um, I think in general, we try to avoid, like, spot zoning, and I think it was just the adjacent site made sense to kind of extend the rezoning along the Kings Avenue frontage.
One of the considerations is about creating a consistent zoning map here, and so if you can see on the left, this is the existing condition. The R-six-B is on those three blocks basically between Stillwell and West Eleventh. By... When, you know, meeting with the applicant and talking about increasing zone capacity on their site, the discussion about like a consistent zoning map boundary and about how to draw that, whether to the west, so it's not just on their site, or to the east, we felt that mapping it to the east was appropriate, given it would have left kind of an odd irregular R-six-B island on its own, just over that small triangular site. As Amelia mentioned before, given the kind of the context of the wide streets proximity to transit, we did feel that this was the most appropriate zoning district boundary to include the non-applicant site without leaving kind of an odd R-six-B pocket, kind of an island on the zoning map.
Are there any, for my own identification, any unintended consequences of doing that zoning change for the other site?
Uh, I mean, as Amelia pointed out, it... For secret purposes, we did project development on that site, which makes sense, and so, you know, thinking through possible scenarios, it... From our perspective, it wouldn't be inappropriate to see new housing development on this site with a mixed-use character, given Kings Highway is a major east-west commercial corridor, it's a wide street, it's about four short blocks to the train. So even if the owner says they have no intent now, zoning is a long-term kind of policy, and therefore, we think even if in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, it does set a framework for guiding development in the area that we think would be appropriate.
So we're thinking about it from the perspective, then, that if we do this, chances are that site at some point, whether it's under this owner or whether it's under another owner, turns into housing at some point?
That's right, and recognizing that there's an active retail use there today, we think the residential with a commercial overlay is appropriate to ensure that there's a continued mixed-use character for the area, knowing that the R-six-B is a relatively low-density district, and wanting to make sure that we don't kind of lose an active ground-floor commercial use in the future while still allowing for residential capacity.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Commissioner Rappleshaw.
Just a couple of quick questions, add the similar questions, Commissioner Benjamin, about including blocks six-six-two-zero. If it's possible, just to provide the full unit breakdown, how many three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom? I'm looking at the plans, and I just have a question, I guess, for the applicant team when they do come back. I noticed they have a number of recreational areas allocated on the lower levels, and I'm just trying to understand why on the tenth floor they decided to put a fourteen-hundred square foot gym up there when it could probably best fit for two or three bedrooms. So I just would like to know their rationale as part of the design. Thank you.
Certainly, thank you for your questions, yes.
Other questions? All right, there being none. This was certified. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The second item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning tax amendments in Brooklyn Community District one. Our presenter is Lucia Capucchio.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair and Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Okay, this is an application by Capscar III LLC for a zoning map amendment from a C-eight-two district to an R-seven-D C-two-four district and a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to map MIH. These actions are to... These actions are to facilitate the development of a new six-story mixed-use building with 15 dwelling units, four of which will be income-restricted. This project area is located at 19 Masbeth Avenue in the Williamsburg neighborhood of Community District One, Brooklyn. The project area is outlined in blue on this map. It is well-served by transit with the Graham Avenue L station, approximately 450 feet from the project area with service between Canarsie and Chelsea. Several buses serve the area, including the B-24, which runs adjacent to the project area along Masbeth Avenue with service to Williamsburg and Long Island City, and the B-34 bus, which runs along Graham Street with service to Greenpoint. The Q-54 and Q-59 buses with service to Queens operate on Grand Street, four blocks south, just outside of this mapping area. In addition to transportation access, the surrounding area also contains several open spaces, including Cooper Park, a 6.4-acre city park to the northeast of the project area, which can be seen on the right side of the map outlined in green. There are two other small triangular city parks south of the project area, Memorial Gore and Orient Grove, both also outlined in green on this map. The project area is also one block from the former Greenpoint Hospital and Cooper Park Nycha Houses, and about a third of a mile west of the North Brooklyn Industrial Business Zone, shown here in purple. The project area is within the Greenpoint-Williamsburg 2009 contextual rezoning area, which maps contextual residential districts, extended commercial overlays, and maintains the 1961 map C-82 district, of which the project area was included. A portion of the C-82 and a portion of an R-6B district was rezoned in 2021 as a part of the 18th, 824 Metropolitan Avenue rezoning, one block south, represented on this map in pink on the bottom right-hand side. Also in 2021, one block east of the project area, a large-scale, a large-scale general development special permit was approved by the CPC in order to facilitate the redevelopment of the former Greenpoint Hospital, seen in pink on the top right-hand side of this map. The project area consists, oh, sorry, hello Chair, um... Do I keep going, or is...? Okay, sorry, okay. Um, the project area itself consists of two blocks in their entirety, Block 2892 and 2893, bounded by Humboldt Street, a 60-foot-wide street to the west, Consilia Street, a 60-foot-wide street to the north, and Masbeth Avenue, a 70-foot-wide street to the south. The project area is bisected by Woodpoint Road, a 60-foot-wide street going north-south through the project area. The development site, Block 2893, is applicant-owned and includes Lot 1 and Lot 59. Combined, the two lots make up the small 2,966-square-foot block with frontages on Masbeth Avenue, Consilia Street, and Woodpoint Road. The site has been used for automobile-related uses in the 1960s and surface parking since at least 2009. These are outlined here in yellow. The rest of the project area to the west of the development site consists of non-applicant-owned lots on Block 2892, which is an 11,734-square-foot block. These lots include Lot 37, which is a 1,700-square-foot triangular religious shrine and park called Vito Abate Grotto, owned and maintained by Saint Francis Paolo Roman Catholic Church. Lot 39, which is a 2,000-square-foot lot improved with a three-story walk-up apartment building and garage and an auto-service business which fronts on Consilia Street. Lot 38 is a 2,900-square-foot lot improved with a three-story walk-up apartment building and a garage, also fronting on Consilia Street. Lot 40 is an 1,100-square-foot interior lot improved with a three-story single-family home with frontage on Masbeth Avenue. And lastly, Lot 1 is, in a regularly-shaped 3,900-square-foot block-long property fronting on Humbol- Humboldt Street that contains a two-story ambulatory and diagnostic healthcare facility, which was constructed in 2018. As mentioned previously, the project area is in a C-82 zoning district, which has a maximum permitted commercial FAR of 2 and community facility FAR of 4.8. Residential uses are not permitted. The C-82 area consists of the project area, the entirety of the block to the south, and a part of the block to the southeast, and consists of primarily legally non-conforming residential uses and commercial and auto-oriented uses. The surrounding area includes residential districts, including R-6B, R-6A, and R-7A contextual residential districts with commercial overlays along Metropolitan and Graham Avenues. These residential districts range from 2 FAR to 4.6 FAR at a maximum overall height between 50 and 135 feet. Residential uses seen on this map in light and darker yellow and orange range from two-to-three-story walk-up buildings to the south and west and seven-to-eight-story elevator buildings east of the project area. Commercial uses can be seen here in red. Notable community facilities nearby are shown in blue and include a nonprofit, Saint Nick's Alliance, um, Saint Francis Apollo Facilities, including a learning center, church, and a shrine, and PS 132. In the next few slides, we'll look at the project area images, starting at the northeasternmost tip of the project area. On the corner of Masbeth Avenue and Consilia Street, where they merge, we face southwest towards the development site, which we can see outlined in yellow. In the same location, but facing northeast to see the convergence of Consilia and Masbeth Streets, one block north is the former Greenpoint Hospital site and Cooper Park. Turning back west, we are now along the project area on Consilia Street and Woodpoint Road. We see the development site and the service parking uses on the left side of the, of the image and Saint Francis Apollo Church on the right-hand side outside of the project area. Moving west along Consilia, at the Consilia and Woodpoint Road facing southwest, the project area outlined in blue and the development site in yellow in the foreground and the nearly completed 824 Metropolitan Avenue rezoning development on the left-hand side. Moving further west along Consilia, we are now on the other side of the intersection of Consilia and Woodpoint Road. We can see the development site and the project area. Residential context just south of the project area on the northern side of Masbeth Avenue has six-story walk-up residential development on the left-hand side and a, and the 824 Metropolitan rezoning development in the background. Now, at the furthest western edge of the development site along Consilia Street and Humboldt Street facing southeast, we see the project area and recently-developed commercial community facility building and two garages fronting Consilia Street. Turning further south, we see the residential and commercial context of the area along the western edge of the project area and the recently-constructed commercial and community facility building. This is a view of the southwesternmost tip of the project area looking northeast on Masbeth Avenue and Humboldt Street. Moving further east on Masbeth Avenue at the corner of Masbeth and Woodpoint Road, we see the project area and development site in blue and yellow, as well as the context of the C-82 district just south and a taxi-auto business on the right-hand side. Lastly, we end at the intersection of Masbeth and Woodpoint facing northeast and the development site, again, in yellow. The proposed development is a six-story 5.6 FAR mixed-use commercial and residential building with approximately 14,300 square feet of residential use and 2,300 square feet of ground-floor commercial space. The development will rise to a height of 65 feet with full lot coverage and consists of 15 dwelling units, four of which would be permanently income-restricted. The development waves out of required parking spaces and does not plan to provide car parking spaces. Eight part, bike parking spaces are required and will be provided. The proposed actions included zoning map amendment to change the existing C-82 district to an R-7D C-24 district and a tax amendment to Appendix F of the zoning resolution to map MIH Housing Options 1 and 2. The proposed actions included zoning map amendment to change the existing C-82 district to an R-7D C-24 district, bounded by Humboldt to the west, Masbeth Avenue to the south, and Consilia Street to the north. R-7D C-24 is a residential district with a maximum FAR of 5.6 for residential uses, 4.2 FAR for community facility uses, and 2 FAR for commercial uses. For MIH developments, the maximum base height is 95 feet and the maximum building height is 115 feet. The applicant also proposes a zoning tax amendment to map MIH co-terminus with the project area, creating permanently income-restricted housing via MIH Options 1 and 2. The applicant has proposed Option 2 with four units, income-restricted units, at 80% AMI. This application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity. The proposed development would provide new income-restricted housing units on an undeveloped lot within a highly, highly-desirable neighborhood. The area median household income for the project area is around $93,676, which is greater than the median income for Brooklyn and New York City. The applicant proposes MIH units that meet 40%, 60%, and 80% AMI income-band limits. In Figure 1, we see the population of Greenpoint-Williamsburg NTA is predominantly white and Hispanic-Latino, with a percentage of white residents at 62%, which exceeds both the borough at 35% and the city at 31%. The Hispanic-Latino population at 21% is between the borough and citywide percentages. Figure 2 shows the percent change in race and ethnicity from 2010 to 2020. The largest growth we've seen in the Asian population, which has experienced growth of 55%, compared to an increase at 43% borough-wide and 34% city-wide. The Black and Hispanic and white populations have also seen population increases in comparison with borough and citywide percentages. Figure 14 shows the percent change in housing supply and population from 2010 to 2022. During this time, housing units in this area increased by 34%, while the population increased by 19%. Housing production and population change has exceeded both the borough and the city change by over 20% increase in housing supply change and 10% increase in population. In summary, this is a private application for a zoning map amendment from a C-82 district to an R-7D C-24 district and a zoning tax amendment to map MIH to facilitate the development of a six-story 5.6 FAR mixed-use commercial and residential building with approximately 14,300 square feet of residential space and 2,300 square feet of ground-floor commercial space. The development would consist of 15 dwelling units, four of which would be permanently income-restricted. But thank you, and happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you very much. Let me just, one, one point of clarification. This was in the rezoning area of the prior, of a prior rezoning. I think it was the, it was 2009, is that correct?
Yeah, it was in the 2009 Williamsburg and Greenpoint rezoning.
But it was not, but the zoning designation for this site had not changed at that time?
That's correct, it was map C-82, and it remains C-82.
Okay. Do you know why, why that was, or what the history was with that? It looks like Corred's is coming, okay.
Uh, thanks for the question. And so, at the time, as you can see, there's like a kind of a legacy of this auto-oriented uses in this particular area. Um, and of course, we've, we've seen, um, some of these businesses leave, go elsewhere. There were two gas stations also in Metropolitan, both of them have left as well. And so, we're seeing, um, sort of a change in the uses of this area. But at the time, um, there was more of a kind of robust auto-oriented character here. And so, the C-82 facilitated, facilitated that at the time. Um, you know, we didn't want to change the zoning, uh, to make those, uh, uses non-conforming.
Okay, got it, thank you. Let me see if there are other questions. Okay, thank you, this item is certified, let's move on to the next, thank you.
The third item on our agenda is a non-ulter post-referral review of an authorization in Brooklyn Community District 9. Our presenter is Kyra Guava.
Hi Kyra, how are you?
Good, good afternoon, everybody, good to see you. Um, today, I will be presenting a zoning authorization application that is here for post-referral at 975 Nostron Avenue. The application was referred out to Community Board 9 on September 24 for 45 days. This is a follow-up action to the fresh authorization approved by the City Planning Commission earlier this year on February 6, 2024. This project is located in the Crown Heights neighborhood within Community District 9. This is a private application by Nostron Grand, uh, Green, pardon, LLC to permit a 23-foot-wide curb cut at 975 Nostron Avenue. A curb-cut authorization is required to increase the maximum width of a curb cut by one foot from the 22 feet permitted by zoning to 23 feet. As I mentioned in my introduction, earlier this year, which was February 6, 2024, the CPC approved a fresh authorization for 975 Nostron Avenue, seen on the rendering on the left. This action will facilitate the widening of the curb cut proposed to provide parking for the residents and for the commercial use for this project. The project site is located within the southwest portion of Crown Heights and borders the northeast portion of Prospect-Lefford Gardens. And it, it is bounded by Montgomery Street on the north, Clove Road on the east, Empire Boulevard on the south, and Nostron Avenue on the west. Three bus lines and subway lines are within proximity to the project. The immediate surrounding area includes a range of, uh, institutional, commercial, and multifamily buildings, which range from one story to six stories, and a few vacant lots scattered throughout the area. Community facility uses include schools scattered north of the site. The project area is located on the eastern edge of the R-7-1 district and across the edge of an R-6 district. R-7-1 districts are medium-density residential districts that permit community facility uses and allow up to a maximum FAR of 4.6. R-5 and R-2 zoning districts are further east and demonstrate a great array of residential density. This is a bird's-eye view that illustrates the curb cut relation, um, curb cut location in relation to the rest of the development and the neighboring street network, where Clove Road and Malbone Street are both shown as one-way streets. As you can see on this slide, the current curb cut location is on Clove Road along Malbone Street. The currently-proposed curb cut width was 22 feet. This is a view from Malbone Street, taken recently and looking west from Malbone Street onto Clove Road. This image shows you a T-intersection, which shows the proposed location for the curb cut. Both Malbone Street and Clove Road are narrower streets with a width of less than 80 feet, with Clove Road measuring about 50 feet in width and Malbone Street measuring about 40 feet in width. This is a view from March 2024, which looks directly onto the site, south from Clove Road and shows the southeastern edge of the site, where the curb cut is proposed that you see in the yellow line here. You can begin to see the irregularly-shaped street grid closer to the T-intersection. Furthermore, there is no stop sign south of Clove Road and the approach of Malbone Street. The curb cut will serve the residents of the recent, recently-approved fresh application at 975 Nostron Avenue. The curb cut connects drivers to a below-grade parking garage that will provide a total of 193 parking spaces, 164 of which are for residence, and 24 of which are for commercial uses, as currently required for R-7-1 and C-23 zoning districts. On August 2023, prior to the fresh certification and authorization, the Department of Transportation issued a letter to the applicant stating that the agency recommends a wider curb cut for safe and efficient access as a 22-foot-wide curb cut is not sufficient for the width of a T-intersection with an irregular geometry. Their auto-turn analysis is shown here, indicating that a 22-feet curb cut is not feasible, and you'll see that in the yellow line. An auto-turn analysis is a tool that traffic engineers use to map, map out a vehicle's turning radius to evaluate the efficiency and safety of either a curb cut or a street corner. The applicant worked to minimize the width of the curb cut and discovered that the minimum curb cut width must be 23 feet to operate functionally. Therefore, after adopting DOT's recommendation, the applicant is proposing a 23-foot-wide curb cut for the inbound and outbound traffic towards the garage. The curb cut widening would trigger the need for zoning authorization, 25631. Under the zoning resolution, two conditions must be met, where the proposed modification does not adversely affect the character of the surrounding area, and where more than one curb cut is provided, the curb cuts are arranged to foster retention of curbside parking spaces along the street frontage of the zoning lot. The applicant stated that they meet the conditions. This application was referred out to the community board for 45 days on September 24. During that time, the applicant presented at the October Community Board 9 Land Use Committee and the October Full Board. We have not yet received a recommendation or vote at this time. In conclusion, the proposed action would facilitate the construction of a 23-foot-wide- wide curb cut. Happy to take any questions or concerns, comments, et cetera.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so we have an authorization to increase the size of the curb cut by a foot.
Mm-hmm.
And the standard here is, would that affect the character of the area, basically?
Yes.
Okay. I just have a legal question about where the twenty-two feet came from in the first instance, can you help us understand that? Is that the requirement as defined for particular sites, or is it defined in the zoning resolution?
I believe it was in the zoning resolution, sorry.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, I'm currently looking at it, but it was based on the zoning resolution, I forget which article.
It's a zoning requirement. Zoning requirement is for a parking structure like this, you need to have twenty-two feet, is that the?
The maximum width is twenty-two feet.
Maximum width is twenty-two, so you can go up to twenty-two.
Mm-hmm.
And if you want to go anything further, you need this authorization.
Yes, that's right.
Does this authorization allow for us to have gotten, or for them to have sought authorization for more feet?
That's correct.
Could have.
It could have.
But didn't.
So we have worked with D O T, our team and D O T and the consultants have worked together to minimize the width. So originally, it was actually larger than what we're showing here, but the minimum curb cut that would provide an efficient and safe access to the parking garage would be twenty-three feet.
Okay.
Has the need for the authorization based on the zoning resolution.
And D O T is comfortable with twenty-three at this intersection?
Yes.
Where you've got Clove and Malbone Street coming together?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, let me see if there are other questions. Commissioner Ramperchad?
Just two quick questions, has D O T decided if they're going to put a street light on there? I know there's stop signs, I'm just curious. And number two, is this attended parking? Because I'm just curious about how many cars are going to queue up when they're pulling in. Does the attendant pick up the car from the top of the ramp?
So I will say that we don't know the answer for both of those questions at this time, but we can get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, thank you, this item is certified, let's move on to the next one, Sarah.
This item is going to be voted out at a public meeting, we'll put in the calendar for vote. Okay. The fourth item on our agenda is a non-U L E R post-referral review of a renewal of a previously approved special permit in Queens Community District One. Our presenter is Colin Ryan.
Chair, I'm recused from this matter.
Okay, Commissioner Ramperchad is recused, and I'm sorry that I made the wrong designation on the last one, so yes, that will be for a vote, my apologies. Okay, let's move on, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
This is a private application by Cypico Construction Incorporated for a renewal of a special permit to facilitate construction of three new five, nine, and fourteen-story mixed-use buildings in the Ravenswood portion of the Astoria neighborhood of Queens Community District One. Pardon. Pursuant to the zoning resolution, section eleven forty-three, a special permit may be renewed for two additional three-year terms, provided that the commission finds the facts upon which the special permit was granted have not substantially changed. The following special permit was approved in twenty-nineteen, and a special permit request has not changed. In this presentation, I'll provide background on the original application and then summarize the findings of the current special permit renewal application. The project area, as outlined in teal, is located in Ravenswood. It is bounded by Broadway to the north, Thirty-third Road to the south, Vernon Boulevard and Tenth Street to the west, and Eleventh Street to the east. Directly west of the project area is the Naguchi Museum, and it's a sociated sculpture garden, a critical cultural asset in the neighborhood. Rainey Park and Socrates Sculpture Park are located across Vernon Boulevard, approximately a block to the west. Project area is well-served by the Q one oh-three and Q one oh-four bus services, and the N W line is located approximately a fifteen-minute walk to the east at the Broadway Station. The project area is located within an R six B and R seven X C one-three zoning district, which was rezoned in twenty-nineteen as part of the Vernon Boulevard-Broadway rezoning. The project area was originally zoned R five in nineteen sixty-one, and the zoning district mapped in the surrounding area include R five to the south and west, R seven A to the north, M one four R seven A to the northeast, and M one five R six A to the southeast. The project area is currently improved with a single-story warehouse. As part of the Vernon Boulevard-Broadway rezoning on September eleventh, twenty-nineteen, the C P C approved the following actions: a large-scale development special permit pursuant to Z R section seven four, seven four-three, to permit the distribution of total allowable floor area without regard for zoning lot lines or district boundaries, and to modify the minimum base heights; zoning map amendments to map R six B and R seven X C one-three districts; and zoning tax amendments to establish an M I H area. The City Council approved the project with modifications on October seventeenth, twenty-nineteen, to remove M I H option two. The actions would facilitate the construction of three hundred and thirty thousand square feet of mixed-use development, which include approximately three hundred and fifty dwelling units, of which a hundred and thirteen would be income restricted. The proposal includes eleven thousand square feet of commercial space and approximately six thousand square feet of community facility space. Approximately sixteen thousand five hundred square feet of open space would be provided for the public, and an additional sixteen thousand square feet of open space for residents of the neighboring development. A hundred and sixty-six parking spaces would be provided as part of the project as well. At this time, construction has not begun. Here's a view of the project area outlined in teal, facing south from the intersection of Vernon Boulevard and Broadway. Here's a view of the project area facing southwest from the intersection of Vernon Boulevard and Tenth Street, with the Naguchi Museum outlined in yellow on the right side of the image. And lastly, one more view of the project area facing northeast from the intersection of Thirty-third Road and Tenth Street. The special permit is pursuant to Z R section seven four, seven four-three, related to bulk modifications. The applicant was granted bulk distribution and height modifications in order to facilitate a site plan and building mapping strategy that would better relate to the surrounding area. Pursuant to Z R section twenty-three, one four-five-four, maximum residential floor area for any one zoning lot may not exceed the base F A R of the district. In the instance of an R seven X district mapped with M I H, the F A R is six-point-oh. Large-scale special permit would permit portions of floor area generated on zoning lot A to be distributed to zoning lot B. This would concentrate height to the north at adjoining wide streets, namely Broadway, Vernon Boulevard, and Tenth and Eleventh Streets, and away from the Naguchi Museum Sculpture The applicant was also granted base height modifications, shown as indicated by the teal-dotted line. R seven X districts have a minimum base height of sixty feet. In order to be responsive to the surrounding context of the Museum Sculpture Garden and the lower-density character to the south, special permit permitted a lower minimum base height of forty-five feet along portions of Tenth and Eleventh Streets. The applicant requests the renewal of the special permit pursuant to Z R section eleven forty-three. Pursuant to this section, a special permit renewal may be granted, provided the facts upon which the special permit was granted have not substantially changed. Since the approval of the special permit in twenty-nineteen, the area surrounding the project has seen two rezonings to mixed-use districts in context with densities proposed at this site. The Broadway and Eleventh Street rezoning to the east, and the Eleventh and Thirty-fourth Avenue rezoning to the south. The applicant argued in their application that the proposed special permit renewal and the prior actions are consistent with the existing land uses within the surrounding area, while furthering citywide goals of facilitating mixed-use transit-oriented development. On October seventeenth, Queens Community Board One voted a recommendation of conditional approval, with thirty-one in favor, one against, and one abstaining. The board restated comments from the original application in twenty-nineteen with respect to a limited number of affordable units, especially family-sized units. To summarize, the applicant seeks a special permit renewal that was approved in twenty-nineteen pursuant to Z R section eleven forty-three, to facilitate the construction of three new five, nine, and fourteen-story mixed-use buildings in the Ravenswood neighborhood of Queens Community District One. And that concludes our presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we have renewal of a special permit, to which you're entitled, for two additional three-year terms pursuant to zoning resolution eleven forty-three, if the underlying circumstances have not changed. So that really is the question here. You noted that there were a couple of developments that have taken place since twenty nineteen, and those were, it sounds like, consistent with what is being proposed here. Is that a fair assessment of the dynamic?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, other questions, anybody else? Commissioner Benjamin?
One quick question, well, actually two. The first is, why did they not, were they not able to start construction? And what, the second one, which relates to that, is what is the building program, and why do they think they can start construction now? And thirdly, in order to secure their building rights, do they need to only start on one part of the program? Or do they need to start on each one of the parts of the program that were involved?
Sure. So the applicant does cite the COVID-nineteen pandemic as inhibiting them from beginning this project. I'll just refer back to this slide for the programming here, which includes a variety of uses, including commercial and community facility spaces. I believe the applicant is confident they'll be able to take up that development program now, given that there's been some time since the pandemic. But yeah, that's how they reflected it in their application. And to your last question, I actually don't have the answer right now, but we can follow up on that. Unless, Steven?
Hi, my name is Steven Leonard, I'm the Director of Technical Review. Because this is a large-scale and planned as a unit, they can vest the special permit with foundations for any one of the buildings in the special permit.
Okay, and once they vest, they would not need, even if they only built the one part of the program, they would never need to come back to renew the special permit, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Knuckles?
No, I, for the purposes of the zoning, the review session does not constitute a public hearing.
You want to, you want to say in the mic, or?
No, it said that the renewals.
Yeah.
Two renewals, two renewals without a public hearing, could be renewed without a public hearing, so this is not a public hearing.
So a question from Vice Chair is whether you need a public hearing for the renewal of these, and the answer is no, you do not, you actually can do it as part of a review session, and that is why I'm going to pivot now, with your permission, to a vote on this item, unless there are other questions. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to seek consent by a voice vote to send an approval letter on this item to the Buildings Department, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the ayes have it, we will send over that letter, thank you.
Thank you.
The fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning tax amendments in Brooklyn Community District Fifteen. Our presenter is Lucia Capucchio.
Hello.
Hi, hello again. This is a pre-hearing follow-up for a private application from two-one-eight-five Coil Associates LLC for a zoning map amendment from an R four C one-two district to R six A C two-four, R seven A C two-four, and R seven X C two-four districts, and a zoning tax amendment to Appendix F to facilitate the development of a new nine-story mixed-use development, including over three hundred and seventy-eight thousand square feet of residential space, or four hundred and thirty-five dwelling units, a hundred and nine of which will be permanently income restricted, and over forty-three thousand square feet of ground floor commercial space. This application was certified on August fifth, and the public hearing is scheduled for this Wednesday, November twentieth. Oops, sorry. The proposed actions include a zoning map amendment to change the existing R four C one-two district along Coil Street to R six A C two-four, R seven A C two-four, and R seven X C two-four districts, and a zoning tax amendment to map M I H co-terminals with the project area. On September twenty-fourth, Community Board Fifteen held a public hearing, and with a vote of twenty-four in favor, twelve opposed, and one abstention, voted to conditionally approve the application. The board had concerns that the proposed amount of parking would not be adequate, and said that there should be no reduction in the amount of parking proposed. On October ninth, the Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing for this application. Subsequently, the Borough President recommended to approve this application with two conditions: that the applicant locate a grocery store in the commercial floor area and participate in the fresh program's discretionary tax incentives, and that the applicant reduce the proposed parking to no more than what is required by zoning. In summary, this is a private application for a zoning map amendment from an R four C one-two to an R six A C two-four, R seven A C two-four, and R seven X C two-four districts, and a zoning tax amendment to Appendix F to facilitate the development of a new nine-story mixed-use building with approximately four hundred and thirty-five units, including a hundred and nine units of permanently income-restricted housing. But thank you, and I'm happy to take questions.
Great, thank you. Just one point of clarification, since it sounds like there was some divergence of view between the Community Board and the Borough President on the subject of parking. My understanding is that the number of proposed parking spaces have actually increased in this application, it was two hundred and thirty-five, and now it's two sixty-three, is that correct?
That's correct.
And when the Community Board says no reduction of parking, are they talking about off of two sixty-three, or are they talking about off of two thirty-five?
You know, it's a good question, I'll have the applicant speak to that. I know that they, they did increase, you know, obviously, as you just said, they increased the parking spaces by thirty or so units, sorry, spaces. I'm not sure if that was, I think that was after their conversations with C fifteen, but I'll have them confirm, like, when they made that decision.
Okay. Got it, we will, we can address with them on Wednesday as well. Okay, so we'll pick this up for a public hearing, and we can address questions to the applicant, unless there are any others at this moment, Commissioner Benjamin?
Hi Lucia, thank you very much for the presentation. I have the same question for you that I had before.
Yes.
Which is in the description of residential space and affordability, in the profile of anticipated residential affordability, once more, we see a case where the moderate-income apartments, the studio, are more than the market rate. And that's a problem, I think. I'm not sure.
Um, I'm sorry, I don't have the R A R on this, on this presentation. Oh, sorry. Well, I can have them speak to that, I know last time you did ask about unit distribution, which I do have answers to, if you still wanted those.
Yeah.
But in terms of that decision, we can have the applicant speak to it. But did you want me to go over the M I H units?
Sure, I would like that.
Yeah, so their proposed, obviously, out of, you know, the unit mix, in terms of the M I H units, it would be twenty-seven studios, forty-nine one-bedroom, twenty-seven two-bedroom, and six three-bedroom within the M I H program. So then, the overall numbers would be a hundred and nine studios, a hundred and ninety-five one-bedrooms, a hundred and nine two-bedrooms, and twenty-two bedrooms.
Can you give me the two bedrooms again?
Sure, a hundred and nine two-bedrooms.
Of the income-restricted?
Twenty-seven.
Okay.
And the applicant will be speaking to this on Wednesday, so they're prepared to speak to it.
Okay, and if you would let them know that I'm interested in why, it just, as we...
About the rent, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, all right, we'll pick this one up on Wednesday, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Madam Secretary, move on to the next.
The sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a city map amendment in Queens Community District Two. Our presenter is Steven Leonard.
Hello, Steven.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. All right, great. So this is an application from J P B Realty Company for the elimination, discontinuance, and closing of a portion of Gale Avenue adjacent to the on-ramp to the Queens Midtown Expressway. Approval would facilitate an outdoor eating and drinking establishment within the area to be demapped. This application was certified on August fifth and is back for a hearing on this Wednesday. So as was presented at certification, the project area is located between Van Damme Street, Gale Avenue, and the Queens Midtown Expressway in Community District Two of Queens. The area is zoned M one-two with a variety of commercial and industrial business types in the area. The area to be demapped is a crescent-shaped piece of land shown here in yellow, between warehouse buildings owned by the applicant and the curving on-ramp to the expressway. The area to be demapped is vacant and wooded, and is often the site of homeless encampments and dumping. The applicant's property, shown here in red, is occupied by one- and two-story warehouse buildings. The applicant's proposed development would involve the conversion of a portion of one of the existing warehouse buildings into a restaurant, and the use of the demapped area as outdoor seating for the restaurant. The outdoor area... The outdoor area would be improved as a patio. Similarly, and then no expansion or modification of the warehouse buildings are proposed beyond the conversion of the space into restaurant use. The space to propose for restaurant use is shaded in red on the slide. The proposed city map amendment would eliminate, discontinue, oh, sorry. Um, the proposed city map amendment would eliminate, discontinue, and close approximately 7,682 square feet of Gale Avenue, as shown here in yellow, and a 15-foot buffer from the ramp structure would be maintained within the mapped street. The area to be demapped is city-owned and would be sold to the applicant. On October 10th, Community Board 2 of Queens passed a resolution by a vote of 26 to 6 with zero abstentions, recommending disapproval of the application. In correspondence attached to their recommendation, the board stated that their primary concerns included potential loss of public land within the area that had limited green space, the importance of retaining city-owned property for future public use, and uncertainty about the long-term intentions for the site beyond the initially proposed outdoor dining use. On November 13th, 2024, the Queens Borough President recommended approval of the application with the following condition: In accordance with New York City DOT, the applicant must demonstrate appropriate traffic calming measures immediately surrounding the development site, and should present these measures to Community Board 2, the Borough President, and the council member. That concludes my presentation. I can take any questions.
Okay, questions, Vice Chair Knuckles?
Uh, Steven, the, as proposed, the, uh, restaurant would be carved out of what is, um, an existing warehouse, a, a portion of it. I'm just curious, what, what will take place in the rest of the warehouse space?
I don't know that. Um, it wasn't provided in their application materials, but the applicant can speak to that on Wednesday. I'll make sure they're, they're ready to do that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Benjamin? Microphone?
Thank you. I'm just curious about what the air quality, et cetera, will be like for the people sitting outside on this entrance to the LIE Midtown Expressway as they sit and eat their food and drink their lattes while traffic is going by them? It doesn't seem very pleasant. Was there, in the environmental review, did they look at the air quality specifically since this is, in essence, creating a new receptor?
Uh, I will have to get back to you on that. The, I'm sure the applicant can, can speak to it on Wednesday as well. Um, I know that there were no impacts identified in the environmental review, but exactly what kind of, of analysis was done?
Analysis was done, and also of the noise, because if you've ever been near here, the noise as the cars are getting onto the expressway and going around between, is, is quite loud. So I'm just wondering what the analysis was, and what the applicant is going to do to make this space usable. I know that there are trees on one side. I'm not sure if they're staying or going, or what will happen, but I, I'm curious about how they see this space operating as an outdoor eating facility.
Right, and, and a good amount of the proposed patio will be below the level of the ramp. That may provide some, but the applicant can speak to, you know, what their, what their plan is.
Okay, if you could let them know. Thank you.
Fair enough. Um, thank you. Let me see if there are other questions. Okay, all right, so we will pick this one up on Wednesday. Thank you, Steven.
Thank you.
The seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a special permit in Manhattan Community District 8. Our presenter is Chelsea Evans.
Hi, Chelsea.
Hi. Good afternoon. This is a private application by Celtic New York A LLC requesting a special permit pursuant to ZR Section 74711 to allow for use and bulk modifications to a landmarked building at 854 Fifth Avenue in the Upper East Side, Manhattan Community District 8. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing building into a private members' club with three overnight guest rooms. This application was certified on August 5th, 2024, and will be presented at Wednesday's hearing. In order to allow for the private members' club with overnight guest rooms to operate in a residential district, the applicant is seeking to modify the use regulations of ZR 2210. The members' club use would be located on the first through fourth floors, while the transient hotel use for the three overnight guest rooms would be located on the fifth and sixth floors. Along with the use change, the applicant is proposing restoration of the interior and exterior of the building. Most of these changes would be as-of-right and include the installation of an ADA accessible lift in front of the building and the infill of one level of the building's interior court. In addition to the as-of-right changes, the applicant is proposing to extend the rooftop stair and elevator bulkheads to create a code-compliant egress. The proposed extension, outlined in black in the image on the right, would partially be in the required 20-foot rear yard and increase the degree of existing noncompliance with ZR Section 2336 for a rear yard requirement. The requested waiver area is highlighted here in blue. On September 18th, 2024, Manhattan Community Board 8 recommended approval of the application by a vote of 36 in favor, 2 opposed, and 1 abstention, on the condition that the applicant provide tours of the building to the public at least two days per year. On November 12th, 2024, the Manhattan Borough President recommended approval of the application, stating that the grant of the special permit will allow for the restoration and maintenance of an important historic landmark. In summary, the applicant, Celtic New York A LLC, is requesting a special permit pursuant to ZR 74711 to permit use and bulk modifications at 854 Fifth Avenue to facilitate the conversion of the building to a private members' club with overnight guest rooms. Thank you, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. Can you just speak to the difference between overnight guest room and a hotel special permit?
So the 74711 allows for use modifications, so the hotel special permit would be redundant in this case.
But what are the limitations on, on the overnight guest room allowance? Are there a certain amount of rooms that are?
Um.
There's only three rooms, I get that. So is, is there a trigger after a certain amount of rooms that it goes to a hotel special permit, or what?
I don't believe so, but I can get back to you on that.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Ascoman, Eastside Team Leader. So in this case, like Chelsea mentioned, because this is using a 74711 special apartment, we don't need the, the hotel special permit. So if they did not, if they were not using that, if they were only doing a hotel, they weren't doing a use change under the other special apartment, then they would have applied for the hotel special permit even for those three rooms. So it's not necessarily like the amount of rooms that's triggering it, but it's rather that because they're already getting a use change through the 74711, they don't need the hotel special permit.
Is there a threshold on rooms at all? Any, any 74, uh, 711 special permit automatically qualifies for rooms? So if somebody wanted to, and I'm not saying this is the case here, I'm just,
Yeah.
Somebody wanted to get around the hotel special permit, if they did a use change to a 74711, they would not be required, have to be a landmark. Okay, that's, okay. So 711, okay, so there you go. So that's the clarification I need. Thank you so much.
Yeah, Commissioner Gold?
Sorry, so just to follow up on that then. So I understand the, the bulk change is triggering the request, but as far as the overnight rooms, that also falls into the, then the, the 74711? Or that's a different approval?
No, that's right. So 74711 allows for use and bulk modifications.
Got it.
And just, and just to clarify the, the questions here about hotel. Does this actually qualify as a hotel? Like, put aside anything else here, and put aside whether it was a 74711 or anything else. We're talking about two guest rooms, which are overnight, whatever they are. Is this a, is this a hotel?
It falls under the same use group, transient hotel use. I don't, I don't think it would be considered a hotel.
I see, so it's under the use group of a hotel, but it is not a hotel. Is that correct?
You have to be the guest of a member to stay in the room.
I think that's
But, so, okay, so, hold on, let me come to you, Commissioner. So you have to be a guest of a member to stay there. Does that make it not a hotel?
I can clarify. So it is technically a hotel. Those two floors that are using the, the 74711 to get the guest rooms, you know, the stipulation about only members will stay there, that's something that, you know, the members' club is saying they would do, but that's their program. That's not controlled by the special permit, so one is granted. Wherever on the floor plan that they have indicated hotel use, which is on the fifth and sixth floors, they can have those as hotel use.
And they don't need to seek a hotel special permit because there is a provision either in 74711 that allows for this to capture this sort of change of use, or because there's something in the hotel special permit rule which says you don't need to seek hotel special permit if you're going for 74711? Tell us which it is.
Yeah, so the, it's the fact that it's a special permit. So the hotel special permit is something that you can only, you get that use if you go through the special permit process. And in landmark buildings, if you're going through the special permit process under this other special permit, it's still the same sort of review process. So you can do that without having this redundant special permit.
So functionally, this is a review of a hotel special permit, but in the context of a 74711 landmark change of use in bulk? Is that, did I say it correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Murray?
If we were converting a 50-unit building into, that's landmark, to hotel, then we don't need a hotel special permit, but we would go under the 74711?
They could, yes. So they could, if they're, if they're a landmark building, they can get a hotel special permit or a 74711 special permit. So they have the option to do either one. If they don't need bulk modifications, they could just do the special permit under the hotel special permit.
And under both scenarios, they still need to come to this body for approval?
Yes, exactly.
So it's a special permit either way, so it gets the full process? Yeah. Okay, great. Commissioner Benjamin, go ahead.
The one difference would be under 74711, they have to establish a plan of maintenance for the landmark, and the Landmarks Commission has to approve a certificate of no effect or a certificate of appropriateness, which they did in this case, whereas if they could just go under the hotel, they wouldn't have to do any of those things.
Okay. This was a good conversation. I think we all clarified a lot. Helpful, thank you. We'll pick this one up on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Let's move on.
Okay. The eighth item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination for the Brooklyn Yards project. The city council proposes to modify three of the special permits, and staff believe this modification is within scope.
Any questions here, or shall we make our scope determination? Okay, I'm going to seek assent by a voice vote here to send a letter to the council that these modifications are in fact within scope. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay, ayes have it.
Okay, the ninth item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination for the 962-972 Franklin Avenue rezoning. The city council proposes to modify the zoning tax amendment and the special permit. Staff believe this modification is within scope. We are joined by Josh on Zoom to present.
Thanks, Sarah.
Okay, Josh.
Good afternoon, Chair. Next slide. So as Sarah mentioned, um, next slide. On November 13th, the city council voted to modify the zoning tax amendment of the 962 Franklin Avenue rezoning. The angle of the sloping plane from the approved CPC tax amendment was reduced from 15 to 10%, and will rise from a height of 90 feet, which is an increase from the 85 feet previously approved by the CPC. Um, as we can see in this image here, bulkheads would be permitted to penetrate the plane up to 12 feet within 85 feet from Franklin, which essentially would be below the height of the CPC-approved tax amendment. In the applicant's most recent illustrative materials, the number of units is not impacted, and the floor area increased by 4,500 square feet. This modification resulted in further shadow reductions on the Brooklyn Botanic Gardens by up to seven minutes. The modification also added the MIH workforce option to options 1 and 2. Thank you, happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if there are questions. Obviously, we spent a fair amount of time on this particular application across a couple of, uh, mayoral administrations. So, uh, obviously, the council made some, uh, some modifications here, which will, um, you know, make some changes on shadows and things like that. Any questions about where they landed or about the, the scope of those changes? Okay, all right, thank you. I'm going to seek assent by a voice vote to send a letter to the council that the modifications here are within scope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, ayes have it.
Lastly, for post-hearing follow-ups. First, we have 438 Concord Avenue, which had a hearing at the November 6th public meeting. Caesar is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to do the agency's recommendation of the 438 Concord Avenue application, which will be voted on the public meeting session of Wednesday, December 4th. The Department of City Planning recommends to this commission the approval of the proposed actions, a zoning map amendment to rezone from the existing M12 to an M14 with R7D zoning district, and a tax amendment to create a new mandatory inclusionary housing area and include zoning district R7D in the special mixed-use District 18 in the Bronx. The proposed development would facilitate the construction of one new 10-story building with approximately 87 housing units, of which 24 are intended to be income-restricted. The building will also have light industrial and retail spaces, and is located on 438 Concord Avenue in the Mott Haven neighborhood, Community District 1 at the Bronx. The agency recommends the development because, together with its required actions, it aligns with Department of City Planning objectives to increase, to increase the stock of affordable housing, specifically of family-sized units with more than two rooms, and at the same time, creating local jobs. That's all for today. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Any questions here? Okay, we'll pick this one up for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Gleason Funeral Home Commercial Overlay, which also had a hearing at the November 6th public meeting. Joy is on Zoom to present.
Hello, good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners.
Hi, Joy.
This item is scheduled for a vote on December 4th, the Gleason Funeral Home Commercial Overlay. And I'm here today to present the agency's recommendation for the proposed action for a zoning map amendment from an R2A zoning district to an R2AC22 district. This proposed C22 commercial overlay would facilitate the development of a second accessory parking lot for the funeral home on Lot 6, adding 22 new parking spaces. And, um, yeah, the agency recommends approval of this action.
Great, thank you very much. Okay.
Okay. Also listed for post-hearing follow-ups are 455 First Avenue and Spark Kipps Bay. There were applicant responses on both projects in your weekend materials. Ally is here, should there be any questions today?
Great. Ally, you're not making a specific presentation, right?
Um, no, I'm not making any presentation, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay, are there any questions on, um, I'm sorry, and this is on both, right?
Yeah, 455 and Spark.
455, First Avenue, and Spark, Kipps Bay. Follow-ups, questions? Okay, thank you. All right, next.
Okay, uh, lastly, for post-hearing follow-ups is 441-467 Prospect Avenue, we, uh, which had a public hearing at the November 6th public meeting. There were testimonies and public comments in your weekend materials, as well as a letter from the applicant. Jukey is here to present.
Thank you, welcome, Jukey, noting Commissioner Rep. Shad is accused. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. I don't have a in-depth presentation today, um, just a couple points. Uh, the public hearing for the 441 and 467 Prospect Avenue rezoning was held on November 6th. And again, this is a private application by Arrow Linen Supply Company to facilitate two new 13-story developments totaling 248,700 square feet with 244 dwelling units, including 61 MIH units in Windsor Terrace, Community District 7, Brooklyn. At the public hearing, the commission asked the applicant a number of questions about the proposed project. The applicant team has responded to those questions in writing, and those responses were included in your weekend briefing package. I want to note that during public review, there were concerns raised about city of yes, how city of yes for housing opportunity might affect this project. We want to share that the vote for this project, Arrow Linen, will take place on December 18th, which will likely be after the city council's final vote on the city of yes for housing opportunity. I just want to say likely. I'm here today to answer any questions that I can on the project, and I will come back in following review sessions to answer any follow-up questions, and later on to provide the department's recommendation on this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Jukey. So it sounds like we will have an opportunity to go through, um, potential impacts on this project, a result of whatever action the council takes on housing opportunity, and we'll have some additional follow-up information from the applicant in, between now and perhaps the next time we are together for a review session, is that right?
Yes, we'll have two more. Yes, we'll have two more review sessions before the vote on this project.
Okay, got it, all right, well, let me see if there are issues that, that people want to address now, or we can hold them for the next time, Commissioner Benjamin?
I just want to address the issue of timing, um, it was my understanding that the council intends to vote on the fifth of December, but that's only if there are no modifications, is that correct?
No, you're talking about on housing opportunity, on, uh, yeah, um, no, that's with, that would be with modifications, that's the timeframe with modifications.
Okay.
Okay, other, other questions? Okay, all right, okay, so we'll, we'll pick this up, Jukey, we'll see you at the next one, okay, thanks, everyone. Madam Secretary, do we have anything else on the agenda for today?
No, Chair, grab that.
Do you have any announcements, uh, that might break my flow as I bring this meeting to a close?
No, Chair.
Okay, wonderful, with that, thank you to you, Sarah, and thanks to all the Commissioners for being with us today, we will see you all on Wednesday, thanks.
Be timed at two forty-two P M.